Welcome to the February 22. City of Walton Work Session. Thanks for joining us this evening. Tonight, we have a couple of big items on our agenda for review. The first being our housing production strategy and the second being the Basalt Creek Parkway update. So we'll launch right into our Walton Housing Production Strategy. As is Karen and Steve.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Steve Cooper, Assistant Community Development Director. With me this evening on our project team are Karen Pearl Fox, Senior Planner, Erin Engman, Associate Planner, and then we have our consultant, Eco Northwest. And representing Eco Northwest is Beth Goodman, who's the Senior Policy Advisor and Project Manager. And then CDD Natalia Berta, excuse me, who is an associate with Eco. So over the next forty-five minutes, we'll go through some information about the housing production strategy, the purpose of having a housing production strategy, an overview of what it is and where it fits in with some of the other efforts that the city's engaged in. And then some specific items in regards to the housing production strategy itself, review of some of Walton's key housing needs, in which we'll ask you, the council, for questions on the results. And then similarly, review and discuss draft housing strategy policies and solicit your feedback on those policies and look if there's anything that we've missed so far. So part of the reason why we're here this evening is that this effort is an extension of the 12 and 2040 project, which of course, I think all of you know by this point, started out with the 12 and tomorrow visioning back in 2014. Code update in 2018, in which emerging issues of housing need of housing came out of it. And as a result of that, we conducted housing needs and economic opportunities analysis. Eco Northwest was also our consultant on that effort, so we're glad to be working with them again. And then in late 2019, the council adopted priority prioritization out of the emerging issues, as well as the housing needs analysis. And so following that, we've continued to work on the 12 and 2040 implementation. We've already gone through an update to the housing elements of the comp plan, so placing strategies and policies from the housing needs analysis into the comprehensive plan. As most of you remember, that update also included a graphic update and reorganization. And so we're here this evening to talk about the housing production strategy. We'll be back before you on a different evening, probably in late March or April, to talk about the middle housing code update. And so just before we get a little bit too far into the presentation, just quickly, I want to touch on what exactly is a housing production strategy? And so generally speaking, a housing production strategy is a set of strategies and policies contained in a document that the council will be asked to adopt later toward the end of the project that contains policies and strategies which simply put, encourage development and preservation of a diverse housing type, housing stock in 12 that is affordable to all. And so I think that I'd also just mentioned the tie into some of the past and ongoing council priorities, housing being one of them. In particular, that housing priority for the council included addressing affordable housing, workforce housing and senior housing. And so as you'll see in some of the draft policies and the foregoing slides, those topics are all addressed. I will note that, you know, what the housing production strategy doesn't touch is it doesn't touch some of the other council priorities like environment or community assets like parks. However, it does also have an intersection with some of the other council priorities such as transportation and some of the other items, so. With that, I'll move on to just a quick overview of where we're headed. So like I mentioned, in late 2020, we did that housing element adoption in the comprehensive plan. And then we're approximately where the star is right now, so we're getting ready to finalize with your input the draft report on the housing strategies and implementation. And then after that input, we'll be putting the draft out to the public and get additional input from them. I think that you all know, but I'll just mention at this point that our planning commission has also put in a lot of work to help craft the draft to get it where it is right now, and they'll continue to do so going forward towards the ultimate adoption, which again, will be with the council. And then I guess the last thing I'll just touch on quickly as far as overview, and I'd just be remiss if I didn't mention House Bill 2003 by name. I'm sure a lot of you on the council have heard this from some of your other colleagues in other jurisdictions. And so we'll just quickly talk about what House Bill 2003 is. So it applies specific legal requirements to cities in the metro region over 10,000, where there are requirements that we adopt as a city. These housing strategies, which are based on our most recent housing needs analysis, which again was adopted in 2019, and then some of the policies were put in to the comprehensive plan additionally in late 2020. And so as you'll see, the draft housing production strategy identifies 12 and future commitment to implement policies or strategic actions to address its housing needs. And I think that that's probably maybe a little bit too technical way to say that House Bill 2003 is effectively forms kind of a bumpers on the housing production strategy. So there are some requirements which you'll see in the following slides that Beth is going to present that reflect that. So there's a need to specifically look at certain types of groups of people who live in 12 and some other requirements that are within the bill. Although I think again, I would just say that, you know, from the implementation standpoint, the draft that we've been working on with the planning commission is as much as we can be tailored to the needs of 12. And again, we're just viewing that House Bill 2003 as some guideposts that give us some some goals that specifically need to be met within it. But I don't think that they in any way hinder going towards that, again, that council priority of housing with affordable housing, workforce housing and senior housing being high up there on the list. And so I'll just quickly stop sharing and pop out of the PowerPoint just to see if there are any questions before we launch into the meat of the housing production strategy itself.
Questions so far? I didn't think so. You haven't got any controversial yet.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. And so I'm just going to turn it over to Beth, who's going to take us through the rest of the presentation. And of course, our staff will be here to answer any questions that you have as Beth goes on.
Thank you very much, Steve, and thank you for having me here this evening. Steve is going to be showing the presentation and I'm also looking at some things on my screen, so I apologize if I look away from you. So a housing production strategy is an action plan that's played out over six years. It's implementing, it's building from the housing needs that we showed in your most recent housing needs analysis. And in six years, the city will be required again to do a new housing needs analysis and a new housing production strategy. So it's part of a chain of housing policy that'll stretch out over a long period of time. The housing production strategy talks about contextualized housing needs. I mean, which means essentially putting more detail into the housing needs. We'll talk about some of that detail this evening. It also considers engagement with communities, especially underrepresented communities, which 12 and staff have certainly been doing over the last few years. So we're bringing that engagement and what we've learned, what staff have learned from that engagement about housing need into this process. And we're trying essentially to develop strategies that will meet your future housing need. What the city is committing to when you adopt it in the housing production strategy is you're committing to trying to implement the policies and the strategic actions in the strategy. It may be that in trying to implement some of them, you find that some of them don't fit to Alaton quite right. And that's okay. Your responsibility to the state will be about updating the state about your implementation process, what's working and what's not. And when something's not working, what you'll do instead of that. So so your your commitment is to trying to implement. And then obviously trying to do that implementation. Steve, could we go on to the next slide?
Yeah, and just a procedural point, is it okay if the council just interjects if they have questions as we go along? I think some of the information may be kind of dense at points, and so I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page.
As long as somebody else is paying attention to who has questions, I'm happy with that.
I'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you. So so at the very basis of a housing production strategy, you have the concept that everybody needs affordable housing. And we say, when we say affordable housing, we're talking in the context of cost burden. So a household should not spend thirty percent or more of their income on housing costs. This is a standard from HUD, from the federal government. So when we look, thank you. When we look, thirty-seven percent of Tuolotin's households are spending thirty percent or more of their income on housing costs. In the Portland region, that's forty-two percent of households. If you look here, we're showing the dark blue part of the bars, sixteen percent of households for total households are severely cost burdened. They're spending fifty percent or more of their income on housing costs, and this is gross income. When you look at renters, they're more cost burdened than homeowners. Fifty percent are cost burdened and twenty-six percent of renters are severely cost burdened. So that gives you some idea of the problems. Steve, can you go on to the next slide? So this is a rather dense graphic that shows housing in the context of of different income levels. For the Portland region, ninety-two thousand dollars is a median family income. When you look at fifty percent of median of the median family income down around forty-six thousand dollars, a household with that income can afford rent of about one thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars per month, including basic utilities without being cost burdened. Housing that's affordable to households in that income level at fifty percent or less is not generally produced by market rate housing developers. It's generally produced by people like your housing authority, your nonprofit organizations. So these are the households who need affordable housing. That's often government income, income restricted, government subsidized affordable housing. When you're looking at housing between fifty and eighty percent of median family income, it's often market rate housing. It's still hard for market rate housing developers to develop that. And so some of the policies we'll be talking about are really geared towards that group. This is generally speaking, renter households, and this is in the category that you might call middle income housing or workforce housing. And then you go up to a hundred and twenty percent of median family income between eighty and a hundred and twenty percent. You have housing that begins to be affordable to some households for ownership. It's kind of rare in the Portland area, but you do have some of it there. And above a hundred and twenty percent median family income, that's where a lot of your developments taking place. And a lot of market rate homeownership housing is produced there. So that's that's some of the framework and the context that we're working within. If you go to the next slide, what we've got here is we've got the percent of households in Tuolotin in dark blue, your current. And in the teal color, those are your new households from your housing needs analysis by those income groups. So you'll see we're looking at, I unfortunately can't do the math in my head, but little less than four thousand households that will be in the less than fifty percent median family income over the next twenty years. You see about forty-two hundred, forty-two hundred households that'll be in the upper income range. And these households are in your middle income, your workforce housing range. This is what we're we're working towards. And so we've got this in the back of our head when we're thinking about housing affordability. Are there any questions before I go on?
We do have one from Counselor Sacco. Thank you.
And this is for staff, if you know this, so when we're looking at the previous slide, do we know what our average rent is in Tuolotin? Do you kind of see where we land in that in that slide?
I've got that information and I could pull it up for you now, or I could send Steve information about it a little bit later, but your your market rate rent falls between eighty percent median family income and fifty percent. It's right around sixty percent of median family income, which is theoretically exactly where I would expect it to be. So we can get those specific numbers. Are there any other?
We have another question from Counselor.
Yeah, I'm wondering on these future households, I guess it's related to Counselor Sacco's question. How much do you estimate will be renters as opposed to homeowners?
So we don't try to estimate how many will be renters as opposed to homeowners. That's not part of what we try to forecast. But if we're assuming that it'll be approximately the same ratios that you currently have. But with, I'm not going to talk much about House Bill 2001. But with implementation of House Bill 2001, you get opportunities for homeownership and rental in different types of housing than you had before. So in duplexes and cottage housing, I think that's going to change the housing market over the long period of time.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. So Steve, can you take us on two slides further? Okay, so this one, what this is showing you is renter cost burden by income. And the real purpose of this slide is to show you that lower income households, especially those with income below thirty-five thousand, almost all of those households are cost burdened. And by the time you get up above fifty thousand dollars in income, you'll have many fewer households who are cost burdened. And so this is exactly the the pattern that I would expect to see. There's a pretty dramatic break between thirty-five thousand, fifty thousand and above fifty thousand. But that's that's the sort of pattern that we see here. I have my note here that a household would need to earn about fifty-eight thousand dollars to afford the average multifamily rent in Tuolotin of about one thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars for a two-bedroom unit. That's about sixty-three percent of median family income for a family of four. So one thousand, four hundred and fifty, I know I looked at that number recently. So a household would also need to earn a hundred and twelve thousand dollars to afford the median home cost of a house in Tuolotin of about four hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. That's a little bit above a hundred and twenty-two percent of median family income for a family of four in that chart that I showed a few ago. So four hundred and sixty-one thousand is what your median sales price was recently.
I have a question if I could ask, Lynn.
Yes, please.
Thank you. I noticed that the research numbers are 2013 to 2017.
Yes.
Which is a little bit ago. The fourteen hundred and fifty dollar average rent figure that you shared, is that a 2020 or a 2021 number? To look, to use that to reference back to these, this four-year average number? Or is that fourteen hundred and fifty dollar number concurrent with this four-year timeline?
No, we pulled the the four-year time data from what five-year data, really, what we, from what we did in the housing needs analysis. The multifamily rent and the sales price that we just quoted you are 2020 data. So late 2020. So.
Okay, thank you. I have another question, but I think we're getting there, so.
Okay. So then, are there any other questions before I go on? So then, switching topics a little bit from just affordability to looking at affordability among specific groups. The housing production strategy requires that a city look at race and ethnic groups in terms of affordability, people over sixty-five years old, people with a disability and people experiencing homelessness. So what here we're looking at is cost burden among Latino households and people of color who are non-Asian. This is for the Portland region, region. We pulled out Asian people of color because their rates of cost burden are different than other people of color. And so this is for the Portland region. The reason we don't have it specifically for Tuolotin is the quality of the data from the census is just simply poor for this information at the at the city level. So what we're showing is that Latino households are cost burdened at higher rates than the overall cost burden in the Portland metro, more than fifty percent. And cost burden, severe cost burden is much higher. And non-Asian people of color are also cost burdened at a higher proportion than the overall Portland metro. Sixteen percent of Tuolotin's population is Latino. They're the largest community of color in Tuolotin. So this is one of the things that as we're developing the the policies, we're thinking about. Steve, could you go to the next slide?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
I look at the, can we go back to the last slide? Thank you. I I've looked at some of these numbers too, from the county perspective, Washington County. So I don't know if those numbers are better. And I do want to say that from looking at those numbers, there's also even greater disparities among blacks and indigenous Native Americans. So I just wanted to bring that up because the the numbers, when you look at those percentages, I don't know if you have those from this study, if you could share. But I know from the Washington County study, they're tremendously different.
So when we were, this information that I'm showing on this slide, it's from the the state of Oregon's Regional Housing Needs Analysis, where we looked at cost burden by region across Oregon. This one's specific to the Portland region. And the reason that we don't go into more detail here, but I think we've got more detail in that report about different groups of color is is simply about the quality of the data. That it's it's a little bit complicated and I would be happy to talk to you about it offline. But we were looking at the best quality data that we could for that particular study. So we do provide other information in the report about income and number of population and all of that in Tuolotin and and the region by each different race where that's available. So we do have more information. We're just trying not to overload you here.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
I actually, I have a question. Thank you, Counselor Brooks, because you brought up a good question that reminded me. I know you said you didn't want to overburden us too much, but I'm wondering, is, do we have an ability to pull any of this research or any of these numbers by, for instance, like female headed household?
I would say that in a place as small as Tuolotin, that that data would be very, very poor. Poor quality. Essentially, where we get this information from is the American Community Survey. It's from the census. And so it's a sample. And when you start looking at things like cost burden by gender, then you're you're dividing it up into smaller groups. And then cost burden by gender by race, you're dividing it up into very small groups. So that kind of information is, I I I don't have it available to me and it would be of poor enough quality that I would be very concerned about it. But I think your your overall point is that when you look at female-headed households, they're more likely to be cost burdened. And I'm not sure that that we need a lot of data at the Tuolotin level to tell us that. That's information that if we look more broadly at a larger geography, we can see that that is the case.
And that was my thought was maybe that we would have something by, say, the Portland region that would touch on that, because we do, I believe, have a lot of female headed household families in our community. I think that, as you say, this particular issue is extremely poignant when you look at it through that lens, so.
I would, I know we've got some information. It's not necessarily about female head of household. But it's about, if I'm remembering correctly, single parent head of household, which is most frequently female. So I'll see what we can bring in from the other sources.
Yeah, and if I could just interject, I think these are great questions. And I think also that we would ask that you keep some of these questions in mind as you as you get to the draft policies and help us answer questions of whether or not some of these limitations or some of these things that observations that you're adding would would cause us to tweak or alter or add any of the policies that we have, because they're all great observations.
Exactly. So going on to the next slide. So this is a median household income by age. We've pointed to the households that are over over sixty-five years old. And the point here is that in Tuolotin, incomes from people over sixty-five years old are seventy percent of the overall average. So once you get over sixty-five years old, you're looking at substantially lower incomes. Tuolotin has about almost twenty-seven hundred people who are over sixty-five years old. And when we look at what Washington County is expecting over the next twenty years, they're expecting people over sixty-five years old to grow from fourteen percent of the population to nineteen percent of the population by 2040. And so this is a group of people who is also growing, who also have disproportionate housing needs. In other words, they're more likely to be cost burdened than your overall average. So we've got lots and lots of information about this group as well in the report. And on the next slide, we look at share of people with disability. So what we're seeing is that sixty-five percent of people with a disability are rent burdened, meanings they're renters and their cost burden in the Portland region, compared with forty-six percent overall average for rent burden in the region. And again, this is regional data. And our chart here is showing share of people with a disability by type of disability in Tuolotin. And so we'll be bringing a lot of information in about rent burden and people with disabilities because it's more common as well. And of course, I'm sure you all are thinking, well, people who are older are more likely to be disabled. And of course, there's intersectionality by race and ethnicity as well. And so sometimes these things will will pile on top of each other. The other thing that we're looking at is people experiencing homelessness. There are about three hundred and seven people experiencing homelessness, according to the point in time count for Washington County. When we look at another source of information, there's a little over two hundred students experiencing homelessness in the Tiger Tuolotin School District. A lot of those students live doubled up. So we've got information that we'll be bringing in about people experiencing homelessness to inform the policies as well. So before we go on and start talking about the policies a little bit, are there any questions?
Just going to pop out a second and give us ourselves a screen break.
Okay. Squiggle around too. All right.
We have a question from Counselor Brooks.
Thank you.
I'm just from my participation.
Um, just from my participation on the LIP committee, there's been a lot of conversations around the counts for homeless people and the difficulty counting. So, and I've heard numbers that are slightly higher than two hundred for our Tiger Tuolatin schools through different numbers, more like, not into three hundred, but like two fifty something. And so I just wanted to be, I wanted to speak to that. And I also wanted to speak to just being mindful around some of the strengths of cultures and individuals that are not involved in the system and the way, you know, some of the factors that go into why people aren't being counted and being culturally sensitive and strengths based in the way that we speak about some of the communities that find themselves challenged financially and are here. And I think it's a way of reducing sometimes the impact of re-wounding people that are already hurting. So I just want to say that because I know that there's deep concerns about these counts and that we do feel that there are people that are missing from these counts.
And that's a very good point. Our work with Oregon Housing and Community Services on the regional housing needs analysis, we dug into especially the point in time count. There's a lot of criticism about that. And I seem to remember that the best estimate we came up with for an underestimate was about one point six as a ratio. Under the words, for Washington County, if I'm applying that right, instead of three hundred people, it would be more like four hundred and fifty people were experiencing homelessness. And I'm just doing that math real quick. So we can note that. And to a certain degree, I think we're not going to get at this point until the state is able to get more perfect data about people experiencing homelessness. We're going to be challenged by that. And so then the question ends up being, what can the city do to address homelessness? And to a certain point, more perfect data isn't going to help the city do more. As we'll talk about in a few moments here, it becomes a matter of funding. So there's a lot of need out there. And we'll eventually, I think, with the state being able to put better numbers to the need, we'll eventually have better numbers for that. But there's a lot of need.
Well, can I just, I think that that's true, that there's going to be needs that we need to take into account. And accurate counts can result in more funding. And also, accurate counts can result in more accurate outcomes of how well we're doing. So I think it's beyond the conversation of exactly what we're lifting, but also what are we saying and how are we communicating? And are we putting asterisks into the conversation as we are seeking to develop a solution, not seeing that those strategies are in question, just more just being really clear and direct around what we know and what we don't know. That's really important to me, I think.
Okay. That is a good point.
It's such a serious conversation and we all can kind of feel it a little bit in a different way after the ice storm and people dealing with just a few days, still with a roof over our heads, of being cold and these folks dealing with this day in and day out. So I think it's really important. Thank you.
Certainly.
I'm going to ask that counselors, don't ask any questions until we wrap up this section that's coming up. Hold your questions and write them down because we only have ten minutes left for this topic and we're running out of time. So I want the presenters to finish their presentation, then we can ask questions.
Okay.
Continue on. Thank you.
Certainly. So Steve, could you go to the next slide? And so here, we're going to talk about some of the preliminary policies. Before we do that, the next slide, please. This slide is one to remind you that cities have control of some parts of the development process, but not all parts. And so cities can directly influence things like land and infrastructure availability. Cities can directly influence public policy. Cities can influence market feasibility through some policies, which we'll talk about, such as tax incentives. Things like capital, developers' access to capital, that's not something that cities generally influence unless it's on publicly subsidized affordable housing where there's a lot of public subsidy going into it. So the important point here is that Tuolatin has certain things that it can directly influence strongly and certain things that it has more limited influence on. Steve, if you'll go to the next slide. So we will look at a variety of types of strategies to support housing production. The more impactful strategies are going to be the one that talk more about things like land acquisition and disposition. In other words, having land and putting it in for development, having funding that the city can allocate onto things that are less impactful but still necessary, things like informational resources. Something like leveraging partnerships, that's essential to what we're doing, but it's not sufficient in a lot of cases to result in new housing development in and of itself. Removing regulatory barriers is right in there. Go ahead, Steve. So the policies that we're talking about here are, one, policy one about affordable housing and strongly prioritizing development of affordable housing that's affordable at less than sixty percent of median family income. And these are things like adopting a property tax exemption, considering a construction excise tax, these sorts of things. Affordable homeownership, encouraging, supporting affordable homeownership to create opportunities for wealth creation. So looking at impediments to homeownership opportunities, partnering with nonprofits to promote homeownership education. Those are some examples of strategies. Preservation of existing affordable housing, this is one of the more important strategies because it costs the city less potentially. So looking at a healthy housing initiative to address things like safety and mold, lead mediation, that kind of thing. Supporting preservation of affordable housing units that are affordable at less than sixty percent of median family income as things like tax incentives age out eventually. Could you go to the next slide, Steve? Preservation of NOA, which is naturally occurring affordable housing, looking at preservation of it to prevent displacement. And so again, you can look at certain tax abatements or low-interest loans for making needed improvements. So rehabilitation of existing housing is one of the ways that the city can work in that. Racial and social equity through decision makings. The city is already in the process of developing racial equity policies. This would be part of that. The city could develop an equitable housing plan. It could ensure that there are opportunities for fair housing, education for landowners and for property owners and property managers. These are some important pieces. Workforce housing development, so this is development of housing that's in that lower part of that middle income. So how can you support that? Looking at partnerships for large employers who are interested in an employer-assisted housing program. You can partner that way. You can develop tax incentives that support development of this kind of housing. The next slide, please. Housing stabilization, and this is to prevent and address homelessness. This is a very important one. Looking at rental and utility assistance partnerships, evaluating programs to rapidly rehouse people is experiencing homelessness. So you want to address existing homelessness and, very importantly, prevent new homelessness. Policy eight about rehabilitation of existing housing. So again, that looks at potentially a low-interest loan or grant programs to lower-income households to rehabilitate existing housing. The next one, accessible design and specialized design, that is really about supporting people with disabilities in developing code to increase housing that's needed for people who have disabilities of some sort. Providing incentives to increase that kind of housing. The next slide, Steve. Mixed use and housing redevelopment, this is something we heard a lot about in the housing needs analysis. And so this is looking at opportunities to rezone commercial or industrial land for mixed use. Opportunities for housing above retail space. Regulatory and zoning code changes, looking at things like increasing densities or revising other standards to allow for more efficient multifamily housing. Evaluating off-street parking requirements to identify opportunities for some reductions to off-street parking requirements because off-street parking is very expensive. When you pair that with our next policy about transportation and public infrastructure, do you have opportunities to increase density near your transit stations? Opportunities to prioritize your capital improvements in places where you'd be looking at affordable workforce or mixed-use housing. So it's a matter of putting a number of things together. I went through those very quickly and still I don't have much time left for questions. But I will stop now. And say, is there anything particularly missing that you're concerned about not being there? Realize that there's a lot of policies, we didn't just, a lot of actions we didn't just mention. Commissioner Brooks? Counselor Brooks, I apologize.
I just know it's fine. I just wanted to, in the disabilities part, I know that we focus a lot on physical disabilities, but there are so many people that their disabilities are not. And so just a piece in there about wraparound services and other types of supports that help minimize and reduce chances of homelessness for people with all types of disabilities would be something that I'd be looking for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Council Pratt?
Well, I'm just going to make my little comment that I'm not a big fan of off-street parking. I realize paving is very expensive. I know the cost, but I've never been in an apartment complex where there's enough parking. And but my real question is, when I look at this, you're not looking at, and maybe it's not affordable, but ownership for people making sixty percent or less of median family income, is that just, are there just not programs out there? Because my concern is that people, it'd be nice if we can find ways to have reduced rent, but rents increase every year. So if you could get people into housing that's at a set price, even at lower incomes, I would think that could be helpful and give them ownership, but I'm not quite sure how that's accomplished.
That's very rarely happens. Most ownership housing that's affordable at that level ends up being manufactured homes and older manufactured homes and even manufactured home parks with their monthly prices. They're often become less and less affordable.
Other questions? Scan here, going back and forth across pictures. Quick question, Beth. On the land acquisition and disposition, you know, one of the challenges we're going to have here in Tuolatin is just straight-out land.
Yes.
After Basal Creek gets built out, we're pretty much done. So how does the strategy taken to take into, you know, mind that, you know, that the city may have to expand its boundaries or go up in order to hit, you know, the housing that we need? Is that a part of the strategy or is that something or a policy? How does that get wrapped in? You know, considering when the metro region, you got the UGB.
And that's very complicated. So that's essentially through, yeah, indeed. That's essentially through monitoring the fact that you'll be looking at this again in six years. And at some point here, it seems possible that there'll be a UGB expansion that includes land for Tuolatin's Tuolatin's area where there's some urban reserves that are brought in for housing in Tuolatin. And so all the planning that we're doing for this is the kind of planning that Metro would want to see in any case in supporting UGB expansion. And if that happens, then the challenge really becomes, is there a way to secure some of the land before speculation happens so quickly that it can still be used for affordable housing development? And that's the challenge with the UGB expansion.
Thank you. See Karen's fingers up.
Karen, you're muted. I'm sorry.
I wanted to add on to that, that we've also included a number of different approaches that are not necessarily land-dependent, including preservation of affordable housing, preservation of NOA. So existing affordable housing preserving that, using, coming up with ways to preserve naturally occurring affordable housing and the housing rehab component that's in here are all not dependent on housing. So we tried to balance out more of that, given the limitations on land.
Thank you.
And also mentioning that redevelopment will be an important part for Tuolatin.
Yes.
Yeah, because you could always, you know, like you're seeing important, a lot of infill where larger lots are subdivided, which I know drives people crazy depending where you're at. But you know, that's one option that, you know, you have more housing on on the land that you have already inside the UGB.
And you don't necessarily have to go up a lot to make a big difference in a place like Tuolatin. We're not talking ten, twenty-story buildings.
No. I don't think we're allowed more than about eight or ten floors. I think that's all we allow. We just phrase our height restriction in certain part of the city. All right. I thought it was someone else's hand, Bridget, Councilor Brooks.
I just had one. I had two other questions. One, I know Steve, you started off the top saying that we're not addressing environment and how do we address environmental justice issues, especially for these populations as we're doing our planning? What do we need to do to help spur that? And my second question or comment was, I forget the name of it, and maybe Frank can remember, but there is like affordable housing ladders for ownership. I know that this county is using one. I forget the name of the program, but they have a limited types of bundle of rights of ownership to help preserve and to also rehab homes that are in disrepair to allow people that leverage and ladder up into homeownership. So are we? I don't know why that's not included. I'm confused by that.
So I'll say that we're looking at things that the city might do, whereas what the county is already doing isn't necessarily something that the city has to do at this point. So it's additional actions that the city could take. One of them could be about partnering. I'm not positive what the city's role would be in that partnership. So that would be something I'd have to refer back to staff.
And I think that program was proud ground. And I also know that there's another, you know, that that's a little bit different than Habitat for Humanity types of things. But I also know that especially members of different communities are more interested in different ways that those operate due to the bundle of rights in some historic problems around people having their full bundle of rights. So those Habitat for Humanity programs fit better for those communities. So I just want to be conscious when we're thinking about equity and ability to help provide that ladder up. Thanks.
We are looking at land banking. That is one of the strategies, which is what Proud Ground is. The problem is that there's so little vacant land to bank. That might be a better strategy a little bit later. So, Steve.
Thank you so much.
I think Council President Graham says her hands up.
Yes, I did. Thank you. I have a question, and I'm not exactly sure the best way to ask this, but do we have like like um, a jobs um study that we could overlay with the housing and redevelopment study? So that we can take a look at what sort of economic opportunities and jobs there are for people in Tuoloton and the income level from those positions and make sure that when we look at housing and redevelopment, that we're building the right kind of housing for the jobs in our community. And so that we're making sure that we set policies and we make investments in that type of thing that we are looking to build, you know, housing for people that work in this community. Um, because you know, affordable housing for the entire region is such a huge issue. I wanna make sure that we're building for you know, the jobs here as opposed to becoming, you know, um, a reasonably priced housing area for other communities, which then just increases the commuting back and forth in and out of our community for people that are taking jobs in other areas. And that just increases, you know, traffic issues um that we're trying to alleviate. And I'm just wondering if there's some sort of a correlation report that we can look at that takes economic job opportunities and mixes and correlates that to the type of housing that we're looking to do.
So I'll, I'll take that one just briefly, and I think maybe I'll just circle back, Council Brooks, on your comments on the environmental justice. Um, so obviously, some of the housing production strategy, I mean, to the extent that it looks at workforce housing. You know, that's been a conversation, you know, in the region when the region has started to do its regional housing needs analysis of how do we kind of ensure that we don't create affordable housing for basically other communities? Um, I think there are some kind of legal limitations on that. And I think that what we really kind of looked at is maybe the other way around of how can we use the economic opportunities analysis that we did at the same time as the housing needs analysis to update our economic policies in the city to try to encourage more jobs that can afford to live in Tuoloton. Um, which then touches on that point that you raised about the transportation. Because obviously, the fix to transportation for a mature community like Tuoloton isn't to build more roads. It's to make sure that the people in its community have farther to go for jobs, entertainment, um, school, parks, and all of those other things. And so that's something that's really important. And I think that that probably touches on some future work um to go. But I mean, I think that this is the beginning of some of that work. And then to go back to the environmental justice piece, cuz that's something that um is, I think, important to me as well. And I think that we didn't get too deeply into it, but some of the specific strategies around the policies talk particularly about trying to ensure that um a mix of housing for income types is located in what are kind of called high asset communities. And so that would be parts of the community that are located adjacent to quality employment, quality schools and parks. And so I think that that's a big part of addressing environmental justice is making sure that people of all income of the whole income spectrum have access to housing in a variety of well, well-designed, safe, nice places. Um, and so I, I guess, you know, in saying that it doesn't touch on those things, I think there's intersectionality between all the council parties, absolutely. Um, but just in terms of, you know, what is it directly impact? I think that there's um, a correlation and tie-in with a lot of other things. And so, of course, that's gonna tie in when we update the transportation system plan next time that we're gonna be looking at those things like Beth mentioned, as far as doing capital improvements around places where there's opportunities to increase density and then have a better mix of housing. So it does all tie in together. So I apologize if I mischaracterized.
No, no, thank you very much. And can I just say too, with Nancy's point? Um, and with the wraparound services, doing those workforce systems, um wraparound services could also be part of that conversation. And I always have to put a plug in for our plumbing school here, which is an amazing opportunity for people to be trained in high-quality jobs and that we're thinking, we think about jobs with housing all the time. So I love Nancy's question. Thank you.
And and then if I could just plug that we're gonna be coming back to you on May twenty-fourth um with additional work on this item. Um, and so we'll look forward to hopefully answering some of these questions that you've raised in greater details and providing more depth uh as well.
Well, thanks, Beth. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right.
Thank you.
So moving on to item number two tonight, the Basalt Creek Parkway update. I believe uh Russ and Noble is here and Stephen Roberts from Washington County.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and councillors. I, I think um some new faces here, but I wanted to just say a couple of quick things, and then I'm gonna turn it over to a couple of our team members to run through a presentation and hopefully we'll have a little time for questions at the end. Uh, so I'm Stephen Roberts. I'm the Director of Land Use and Transportation for Washington County. I just wanna thank the mayor and Cheryl Lynn for suggesting that we bring this briefing to you all. And I wanna introduce our couple of our team members. We have Russ Knobel from our Capital Projects Group. Renes Kelfkins is our Project Manager for the Basalt Creek Project. Joe Yonkins is our Capital Project Manager. And Aaron Wardell is a transportation, Principal Transportation Planner in our Transportation Group. So with that, I'll turn it over, I think, to Russ.
Yeah, thanks, Stephen. Um, I, uh, many of you or some of you know me before. I, I like to say I've been down there in about twenty years working on projects down in this area. Um, I think I've asked Cheryl Lynn before for like an office space at times. Um, so anyway, um, I'll just uh get going here and and, you know, Zoom is kind of a weird format. So I don't know if you wanna ask questions along the way or say those till the end. Um, however, that works best. Feel free. So um, if you wanna, the main goal here is just to update you on the Basalt Creek Parkway project. You wanna go to the next one, Renes?
There we go.
Okay. Um, so I mentioned twenty years. You can see this uh I five ninety-nine W connector study. Back in the early two thousands, many of you may recall, there was about seventeen hundred acres of land added to U G B in this area. And and everybody started thinking about how are we gonna serve that? And so this, this study was started to kind of look at that. Uh, started with a major highway through the area, and it kind of came down to this, uh, how can we just kind of enhance the transportation network with the multimodal improvements, uh, serving, you know, regional uh access to the interstate, but also helping this local area um provide access to the local area here. And so we came up with this concept of these three arterials that sort of had S, excuse me, east and west. And then one north and south arterial tying them all together. Uh, then the next step on that was to roll that into the regional transportation plan, which then also said, hey, here's some money to start on a Basalt Creek transportation refinement plan or plan to see how you implement that. Go ahead, Renes. I, real quickly too, back on that, I, I just did wanna say that I probably, you know, I probably met over a thousand people during this I five ninety-nine W. We had uh a few major meetings down there, uh, one in Tuoloton, one in Wilsonville, one in Sherwood. Uh, close to three hundred people attended each one of those. Uh, we briefed numerous business associations, clubs. We briefed the councils at the time uh to get to this decision. Go ahead, Renes. So next, we, we kicked off this Salt Creek Transportation Refinement Plan. How do we, how do we serve this area? Keeping in mind what we learned from the I five ninety-nine W study and really look at this uh north-south route uh and this southern arterial route. And mainly the eastern part of this southern arterial route, the piece from one hundred and twenty-fourth, which is the north-south arterial that I talked about earlier, over to I five. So out of this study came nineteen local projects, and you see quite a bit of those just sort of scattered here on the screen. Um, and then the, like I said, the, the county started uh after this, started work on the one hundred and twenty-fourth project, which is the major north-south arterial, which is now completed. And a portion of the east-west route through here, which is, you see the kind of the red bubble, and then the, there's a yellow line there. And um, so we completed the western portion of that yellow line. And what we're really gonna start to talk about is what's inside this red bubble as we further refine the study. Go ahead, Renes. So in that study, looking at this uh bubble area and the other piece that we just recently completed, we looked at a couple different, oh, four different alignments through this area, basically, you know, the upper left. Um, let's look at just improving a lot of the local roads in there. Uh, that just wasn't quite enough. We looked at the upper right, there are diagonal alignment that kind of cut diagonally through the area. And then we looked at a diagonal hybrid, which sort of shoved that diagonal alignment a little further south. And then we also looked at this uh east-west alignment that was a little bit northern um of the ultimate alignment. And so the ultimate alignment selected, Renes, if you wanna show that, is probably what we'll further talk about here tonight. Um, and on this transportation, the Basalt Creek Transportation Refinement Plan, we had um two cities. Um, basically, uh, Walton, Wilsonville, we had um Metro, we had Washington County, um, ODOT. And and you see there that we got uh on this, on the screen here, unanimous support of this particular alignment. And like I discussed, on the upper left, the one that goes up and down, that's a portion of one hundred and twenty-fourth. And we built the Basalt Creek Parkway over to Graham's Ferry. So really, we wanted to just kind of dive into, this is how we got to this point, all these other previous studies, all this other support. Um, you can see on this slide, uh, your council actually adopted this particular alignment back in uh December of two thousand and twelve. And so we'll get into the next slide here, Renes. What, what's next and what we're really here to talk to you about tonight? And I'll go ahead and turn it over to Renes. Um, I don't know if we wanna ask any questions to this point, uh, Mayor. Uh, did you wanna open up for questions now or just continue on?
I'd say continue on, and then folks can write down their questions and ask them when you're done.
Okay.
Thank you, Russ. So yeah, as you, thanks for having us tonight. So as Ross mentioned, we are gonna focus in on the extension project from Graham's Ferry to Boones', which is this uh red dotted line between the, um, the two roads here. A little thing to add, Tuoloton has recently annexed that section of properties all the way down to Green Hill. And then we have completed recently the Basalt Creek Extension or the Salt Creek Parkway between Graham's and Tonquin. One twenty-fourth to um Tuoloton Sherwood Road, and then Tonquin and Graham's through this project will also widen to three lane sections. So with the Basalt Creek Extension, back in June of twenty nineteen, we had a public open house where we presented the three alternatives. We had the alignment that everything was adopted. Uh, this is a federally funded project, so part of that requirement is to look closely in and do an alternatives analysis. And so we looked at three potential touchpoints for the future alignment. We were set on the western side of Graham's Ferry, but on the eastern side, there were three properties that could be impacted by it. We presented the criteria and each of the alignments at our June of twenty nineteen open house to get feedback. Seen any thoughts people might have on these projects, you know, on these alignments. Altern- uh ultimately, alignment B had sent one, turned out to be the preferred one. What set it apart from the other three was it had the shortest bridge. The bridge was a real, the cost of the bridge was a major push factor there. As well as it didn't have a business relocation, the property to the north does have a business on it. And so the residential impacts were consistent, environmental were consistent. There are a lot of other criteria we looked at that became consistent between three alignments. And it was really the cost and the business impacts that were set, that set this one apart. So this is just a rendering of the preferred alignment as it stands today. Uh, the big takeaway here is what looks like a dog bone in the center. That is an access road to the futures the stormwater detention pond to collect the runoff from the roadway. As well as the concept plan the city's adopted has got a future trail along the canyon hill on the west side. This access road to this water detention system could also act as an access to that future trail along the canyon on the west side there.
And Renes, real quick, I just wanna kind of weigh in, just probably everybody knows where they're at, but we tried to zoom out on this, but made it a little bit tougher. But towards the right-hand side of the screen would be I five and towards the left, of course, would be uh headed over to Sherwood. And that's the piece that we just recently completed of the Basalt Creek Parkway that would be to the left of your screen.
And the other interesting thing to note is that you might see these black lines going through the rendering. That's P G E, the R P G tiles going through our project as well. Um, this is the typical cross-section for the roadway. Right now, we're at about a thirty percent level design. We're looking at twelve-foot travel lanes with a four, four-and-a-half-foot planter strip with a shared-use path, twelve feet for bicycles and pedestrians on both sides. The center lane is fourteen to eighteen feet. Reason for that, as we get closer to the intersections, we will widen out to fourteen for the turn lanes, for the future turn lanes. And then the eight-foot we narrow where we don't need the extra full turn. And this is a limited access. There won't be any access roads along the parkway through the section. So we don't need the right turn lane, what's entered turning, we narrowed down for it.
And and real quick too in here, Renes, I know I just wanted to point out that we didn't come up with this cross-section in a vacuum. We've worked with your staff. We've worked with Wilsonville's staff. Um, and and our planning people, your planning people, of course, uh, to come up with this, this cross-section.
And what's, and yeah, and what also helped with the shared-use path here is the fact that this is a designated freight route for the county. And with the overall Basalt Creek plan, the question was, how do you actually separate pedestrians and cyclists from freight traffic? Instead of having a buffet bike lane and having them right next to the tracks and by in, in introducing the shared-use path with a buffer, you set, you provide this separation, which aids in the commuter going through the section. Uh, the, for the bridge cross-section, uh, the planterships, um, die away. Unfortunately, it's not easy to grow plants on bridges. So right, so they will have the eight-foot and fourteen-foot median, again, with the twelve-foot lanes. Whatever, two-foot shoulder and then the twelve-foot Shaggy's path along with the railings next to it along the bridge. For our bridge, we looked at a few different uh choices when it comes for concrete versus steel. This, at the length, we're looking, this bridge is four hundred feet, no, excuse me, seven hundred feet long. And what set it apart that the steel is that the steel and the concrete became very competitive. And ultimately, the weather still ruled out. And so the bridge height will be about seventy feet with a four percent grade. I know there's been a lot of discussions and concern about the grade of this bridge, but with the engineering that's been done, we have been, we've been able to maintain a four percent grade throughout this project. Uh, what, the, the spread meets seismic requirements. It's minimal maintenance. And these have also got the smallest foundations, this bridge type. So any impacts in the canyon are minimized because these are the smallest foundations. And then to give some reference again, Boones Ferry is to the, you know, to the right of the screen and Graham's Ferry is to the west.
And I think, too, to point out, you know, we, we, we have plans to go out and do some more specific investigation of where these peers are. We've done a lot of work in this area with the one hundred and twenty-fourth project, with Salt Creek Parkway project, with the Boones Ferry project. So we have a really good idea of where the rock is and it's raw, you know, where the rock depth is. So it's suitable for a bridge to be in this location. Um, and so we're just gonna go back and and just do some final refinement of where these aisles are to make positive sure that there's rock there, but there's been rock everywhere else we've encountered. So we have a pretty good idea that this will work in this location.
Now, we've heard some concerns about the, uh, the rock in the canyon, but we first needed to determine what pilings, where they're going. Now that we know that information, we can, as Russ said, we'll do the additional analysis just to confirm. But with one twenty-fourth, the Basalt Creek we did there, the Boones Ferry widening, the county has done quite a lot of geotechnical investigations through this area. Our current project schedule, we've had two open houses so far. Right now, we're sitting in the winter, spring of twenty twenty-one. We'll have another open house in the summer of this year. Uh, we'll see if it's online or in person pending COVID. And then in twenty twenty-two, we'll have a fourth open house again. And right now, future activities still contingent on funding into the construction twenty twenty-three. Um, one of the big topics with this project is the environmental concerns. So currently, we, we've got numerous reports that are underway. We are busy doing the biological resource report that includes coordination with the Grand Ron tribe. As far as botanical survey, we're doing an endangered species act. We check for any threatened endangerment. As far as botanical survey, we're doing an endangered species act. We check for any threatened endangered species within the canyon to clarify we're not dam- damaging of their habitat. We look into the wetland delineation functional assessment report. There, we work with the Department of Environmental Quality. They work with us on the stormwater treatment and then Department of State Lands and the Army Corps of Engineers for any impacts to wetlands, ensuring that they are mitigated with accordingly. And then cultural and historic resources, we work again with the tribe for that. As well as with the historic carl and school, it's just west of this project as well. And then we also conducted a noise analysis for the project. And so this is, and this little note on this slide, this, these aren't all the reports we're doing, but this is the, hits the main points that people have been concerned about, with the species, with the water quality, stormwater. So all these are in process. And then technical reports, we've got the hazardous materials report, which is pretty standard for any road project. Geotechnical, as Rush mentioned, as Rush, excuse me, as Russ mentioned, we've already conducted quite a few borings. But now that we've got our bridge location, we can go in and do the additional analysis to confirm that. Hydraulics, we were analyzing just how the flow of water occurs through this canyon and through this area. And then stormwater with our runoff, making sure we collect that all, it's all treated prior to any runoff entry in these local streams. And some background, some more background on this whole project. So going back to the Basalt Creek Transportation Refinement Plan, public outreach during that, it was quite substantial. And this is back in 2011 to 2013. So they were talking about four public meetings, six open houses, neighborhood meetings, community groups, and then six briefings to the Walton City Council, to Walton and Wilsonville City Councils. So during the refinement plan, there was a very huge substantial effort to get the word out for this concept plan and this transportation system that was being planned by the county and the cities for this new area that for development. And then specifically to the Basalt Creek project, we've had two open houses. We've been to the city councils before, back in 2019. And we have met with some of the owners on the Boons Ferry frontage road. We have our project newsletters and website updates. Most recently, October of 2020, we released a, a big, a big update on then. And then we've got our upcoming open house in 2021. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we'll have another open house in 2022. And oh, for a quick minute. So as you said, mentioned, the project was adopted with the Basalt Creek Transportation Refinement Plan. And with engineering, I'll hand it over to Erin Wardell for a minute just to quickly touch base on our transportation system plan update.
Sure. Thanks, Renes. I'm Erin Wardell, Principal Transportation Planner. So we just wanted to give the council a heads up that we adopted the line for Basalt Creek Parkway into our transportation system plan, following the completion of the Basalt Creek Refinement Plan. So that was in 2013. At that time, we didn't have a lot of certainty about where the line would fall. And so we drew, what you see there is the red line connecting the intersection of Graham's Ferry Road to the intersection of Boons Ferry and Green Hill. Through the work that was done by Walton and Wilsonville on the joint comprehensive planning work, and then through the engineering work that Capital Projects has done, we now have more certainty on where that line will actually fall. And so later this year, we'll be proposing an update to the Board of County Commissioners. It's a fairly minor change in the line from a transportation plan standpoint. But it's really important when development comes in that we know where that line is so that we have certainty on where right-of-way needs to be dedicated and where frontage improvements need to be built. We've already been working with the city on the development that you have on the east side of Boons Ferry to the north of Green Hill. And this is pretty important as Wilsonville will start to see development to the south of Green Hill, we expect, at sometime in the next few years. So we'd like to have this update in place so that we can work more closely with the cities and with developers as they come forward.
Thank you, Erin. And then so our next steps in our project, we processing a final design amendment with our ODOT. So what federally funded means is that ODOT, the state, the Department of Transportation, is actually the ones managing the contract. It is still a county project. But the contract and things are held by the state and we coordinate with them. And they provide an oversight that all federal funds are being used in, as in accordance with code. So hence why there's a lot of talk about ODOT with this project. The application for construction funding will submit this spring and then we'll have again another, a next open house in the summer of 2021. And then my contact information. And with that, if there are any questions.
Yeah, pop us back into, uh, we might have to go back and forth, be ready.
Okay.
Presentation. So we can, so we can see everybody.
Stop shit.
All right. Questions for the Washington County team? Counselor Sacco, sorry, hand.
Thank you, and thank you for that presentation. Um, so as somebody newer to the council, I, I apologize that I may be asking something that I'll have, have you to go backwards a little bit, but you had a, a section on there that talked about day road and you had mentioned that it wasn't enough. What do you mean by, can you expand on that? By it wasn't enough, when we talked about expanding day road?
I'll go ahead and take that. Yeah, you know, when, when we were looking at this, you know, 1,700 acres of new land coming in. We also looked at what, what are people trying to do as they cut through here? There, there's a group of people that are trying to get from I-5 over to 99W. There's people that are trying to get up beyond these areas, cutting through. So just by widening day road to five lanes, that wouldn't provide enough capacity for the amount of traffic that was going to be coming through this area with all the future development. Does that start to answer your question?
Uh, I guess loosely, yes. But I guess I'm looking for a little bit more specific information as far as like, like numbers, like what, how like, what is the capacity of that road right now? If, if it was widened, what would the capacity be compared to the capacity of adding? You know, two more lanes on, into a different area that's very close to day road. I mean, it's it's not like we're diverting the traffic into a, a whole different area. The, the, the two are so close that I'm having a hard time understanding what the, what the actual capacity difference would be from widening day road and then putting in a whole nother road, bridge, so close.
Sure. And, and you know, stepping back, just if you recall that first slide that we showed, when, when we first started looking at this, we, we needed a new highway to handle the amount of traffic coming through this area. Out of that study, we came up with three arterials to handle that. And so what we're looking at here is the southern part of those three arterials, the southern one. And, and it needed to be more of a limited access, a five-lane limited access. Can carry probably, you know, I, I don't have the exact numbers and I don't know, Renes, if you recall, but but it handles probably close to a third to two-thirds more traffic than just a day road widening would with all the access points along that.
Uh, one other point I can jump in from the transportation planning standpoint. This is an urbanizing area. It was brought into the urban growth boundary for a mix of different types of uses. But there really wasn't much of a transportation system. So a part of this is just building that system, building in multiple routes and also building in redundancy. At some point, day road needs to be rebuilt almost entirely. And when that happens, there is no east-west route through the area. So also in case of a crash or some other catastrophe. So part of this is building in that, that network system and that network redundancy.
Is that energy or question, Council Sacco? All right, I saw Council Brooks hands up and then the jurors just go up, Council Pratt. Okay, Council Brooks and Council Pratt.
Um, well, I had one first question, which was when you said that there was a unanimous vote by council in December of 2012. I'm not sure if that's accurate. I think that Council President Davis has been opposed to this bridge since the beginning. So I think that we probably have a record of that vote, but I would like to look for that and understand if that's actually accurate. I feel that this has been said many times and that it's been disputed many times. And I think I just want to be on the page. I wasn't around then either and I'm around now. And I've heard a lot of citizen concerns about this bridge. For some of the reasons that you've addressed, I'm grateful that we're no longer looking at environmental study exclusion and that there's some work on that. And I'm looking for more information about that. Communicated would be really helpful. And I guess my other question is for some of the public comments. How much notice was given for those public comment meetings? And, you know, even with today's presentation, we got it on for council in the middle of the day today, even though we knew this was coming for a few weeks. So some of the, I'm, I'm wanting to see a little bit more advanced notice so that the public can really be involved in a way that's meaningful and helpful as far as communicating, not just with me, but with you all too, because it's not my project. And, um, but I hear and spend a lot of time on this as a city councillor. It's very controversial here. It's very unwelcome by some people. And, um, and there's been issues with managing the road build-outs to start with that helps spur the concerns for water management, stormwater drain off, flooding of people's property. You know, there's been a lot of problems with trees dying off already without a bridge. Just all kinds of sorts of problems. So I, I'm really concerned. And one other environmental concern I have is, you know, I have there's a new study that came out about tire coating that causes death and stamina. It made the New York Times, the work's being done at the University of Washington, actually by my stepsister. And so I'm wondering about runoff from truck traffic into this Basalt Canyon. And I'll be really honest, for me, this Basalt Canyon is only so long. And then there's all this flat land around it, but we're still building a bridge, which to me seems expensive. And when we're, we as a city today, maybe not in 2012, but today we're interested in environmental impact in a very meaningful way. And so tho- those questions are really important to me. And if we're going to have things that cause impacts like that, are there ways that the county can bring other lands in to reduce those impacts? There's a lot of land for the environmental impacts. So that, that's another question. And the final one I've got is around the Parks Trail system. It looks like what you're saying is that the runoff would be on the west side. And from what I understand from the parks design is that the the National Parks Trail would come through on the east side by Boons Ferry. So I don't know how that helps with our parks plan design, not just ours, but the Ice Age Trail that's proposed and some of those other concerns that we have. And, and then I'd like to know the specifics on the sound study. Because to me, putting a bridge over a canyon, I don't, I don't have to be an engineer to understand that with a hardscape canyon made out of basalt rock that you can hold a bridge up with, that that might bounce some sound around and some light around for the people and animals, residents living in that area. So those, those are some of the questions. I know that maybe not all of them can be answered right now, but I would like the information and and I appreciate that you're also looking at the schoolhouse. It's been another big concern. So I've just heard concerns, not just from one person, two people, but from a myriad of people. And so to come here and say, oh, it sounds like, you know, there was all this support and it was unanimous and things like that. That's not my experience here today. So I want to be really clear about that. Thanks.
Um, so when it comes to, I'll clarify, when, on the slide for unanimous, it was unanimously decided between all the, so city council, it's just that all five agencies unanimously.
Yeah, Ren, real, real quick, Renes, maybe I can weigh in on that. And, and hopefully I didn't make it seem like it was unanimous at the council. I do know that we worked with Councilwoman Davis at the time. I mean, I met with Councilwoman Davis quite a few times. I know me and her met with a couple of the property owners out in this area. So, so clearly there was concern. The Basalt Creek Transportation Refinement Plan was set up with an executive group. There was executives from your city and they'd make recommendations to a policy group. On that policy group was your mayor at the time and your council president. Those two members voted along with the other two, the other mayor and council president from Wilsonville, along with our county board. That was the unanimous support. Then those two members took that discussion back to your council there in the December timeframe. So, so clearly, I mean, unanimous support was on that particular policy committee. There is, there has been definitely, we've heard a lot of concerns from the neighbors in this area for sure. Runoff, I know, has been another big issue. And I, and I know one of those slides, we tried to show where the, the sort of trail, but it was the road access down to ponds. Those ponds are going to collect that runoff. Those ponds, the, the way they work is they, they allow the water to sit there long enough for a lot of those pollutions to settle down into the bottom of that pond before that water's released into the, back into nature. So, so that starts to definitely try to address some of that. As far as the public involvement, you know, we used to always do just an open house. And, and what we're trying to show you here is we've done all kinds of different ways of, of public involvement. So we can try to capture everybody. You know, I, I don't, I do know I was at a meeting at someone's house along with the mayor and some other people. So, you know, we've gotten to those levels of trying to meet with people and to talk with people.
And as far as notification goes, I'm sorry, we provide at least two weeks notification through mailers. That's one avenue. We do two weeks because we found, if we've gone beyond that to three or four weeks, it slides from people's memory. But then in addition to the mailers, we post on Nextdoor, we do regular tweets, we'll do Facebook posts. We've done the county newsletter, there's, and the project's got a, a email that people have signed up and those go out with the mailers. So we do give at least two weeks, sometimes if not more, with some of the more vocal property owners, if they're calling, when we know it's coming up, we let them know. And that, and so when it comes to notification, it's more than just, it's not a couple of days. It's at least a minimum two weeks before they're here. Um, I'm trying to remember, I'm surprised to hear honestly about the trail because we've had meetings with Wilsonville and Walton City staff about the future trail on the west side. So I'll definitely take that back and chat to them because our understanding has always been that's where it's, and with the concept plan. So I'll definitely get that strained out. I'm trying to remember, a few other questions in there.
And, and we can probably try to get back with, because some of those were a little bit more detailed.
Thank you. That would be appreciative and I would love to be on the mailing list too. So when you send me the information, I will, I will give you my, my emails so that I can hear about the public notices. I just want to make sure that everyone's involved. That could be. And I also hope that you think about if, if, uh, if there's an opportunity around offsetting some of the impacts with land and other ideas that could be beneficial to the city of Walton. Thanks.
So Pratt.
Hi, um, yeah.
I guess nine years is a long time and we've heard a lot of concerns from people. And my first question, I have a few, but my first is, I went to the two open houses in 2019 and I don't know if you spoke with the same people I did, but everybody I spoke to there was adamantly opposed to this project. And I'm wondering when you have these open houses, what you do with those comments you get from people and how that, you know, if you use that or you're just having open houses to let people. I'm kind of confused on that. And I, I guess when I look at this, other than, I will give you the redundancy comment that I heard today, but other than that, when I look at not using day road, I mean, this impacts people's homes. It definitely is impacting that ravine in a precious environmental place. It's, I doesn't, in my mind, I'm accountant and it doesn't make sense. You know, economically to do this, but my, my final question really is, on top of all that is, I'm not understanding why we're going to have a road that dumps onto Boones Ferry. We're going to be adding what, 230 homes there? We've got a mess there now and you're just adding to it. So I'm not understanding what the thought process was to that.
So I can definitely touch base. The comments, we, on the first open house, I think we only received, I think it was five or six comments. The second open house also. We, when they attend the open house, they get our admins direct into where the comment forms are. We encourage people to fill those comments in. At the end of the open houses, we summarize them and we post them. We do take them into account. And as you've mentioned, there has been a lot of concern with Boones Ferry and Ellingson. But part of the transportation refinement plan that was done with the 19 projects that Russ indicated, part of, some of those projects indicated that Boones Ferry needs to widen. Ellingson and Day Road needs to go over I-5. And one day Basalt Creek would go over as well. There's a whole layout and process for different projects that need to be built out as this area, as Erin was saying. It's a whole empty area that's now developing with no infrastructure to support it. And so the transportation refinement plan essentially just filled in that skeleton. And that's what we build, the building out now. And as far as understanding day road and Tonquin and all those, we, I can pull the data from the refinement plan and we can send that over to you guys.
And to jump in from the long range planning standpoint, there is, as Renice just said, the longer term vision adopted into Metro's regional transportation plan is for there to be an over crossing of I-5 here with Basalt Creek Parkway and also with Day Road. And all of the partners who've been involved in the Basalt Creek planning have already adopted the line for this extension of Basalt Creek Parkway between Graham's Ferry and Boones Ferry. So Twalton did that, Wilsonville did that. The county did that, Metro did that, all reflecting that we agreed that this is where this roadway is going to land and that we agree to this future vision for the area.
And Sosaco.
What is the transparency policy or best practices once some of these reports are done? And what is our access to those reports once they're done? The environmental reports, that is, I'm sorry.
For this project, we are, like the noise analysis, we are going to be posting that this week. The other reports as they get finished and I get the clear from ODOT to make sure there's no sensitive information or personal information. I know there's certain reports with the Carlin School that can't be released because of the personal information that's contained in them. But a lot of the other ones, they will be posted to the project website as this is a federally funded project. So as they become available, we'll upload and we'll send out emails that they're available for access.
Other questions? Justice President Grimes.
Thank you. Hi, Russ. I have a question pursuant to the grade on the bridge. I know it's been an enormous discussion for years. What percentage grade is appropriate, especially when you're looking at heavy trucks and commercial traffic? And my question is, when the bridge kind of is done spanning the ravine, do we know the distance between the end of the bridge and when we hit the actual Boones Ferry Road intersection there? And at that point, do we know what the grade is? So once you're off the bridge and you're approaching that intersection, are they close to level or is there still a decent grade there? And how have you perceived that affecting truck and commercial traffic there? I know we've talked about this before, but now that we've picked a 4% grade, I'm just curious, when we get off the bridge, where we are.
Yeah, and I, Renice may not have that right at hand or while he's doing that, you know, one, one thing we have heard this, this grade issue a lot. And, and we started talking about 6% because I was just picking a point at one side and a point at the other side real early on. And since then, we've really worked to try to limit the grade on that bridge. So we've gotten down to this 4% grade, which, which will help, you know, ODOT, ODOT standard, they, they even allow on freeways up to 6%. Our standards are up to 12%. Clearly, that's not what we're trying to do here, but it kind of puts it into context, getting down to 4% does help quite a bit with that. One of the other unique things we're going to do on this is some sensing, truck sensing in our signals. So when they sense two or three trucks coming at one time, they're going to try to keep that signal green. So those trucks don't have to apply their brakes as they approach that signal. They don't have to stop from a, or they don't have to start back up from a dead stop. But as far as the technical stuff, Renice, do you have that?
Yeah, it's about 200 and, excuse us, what is the echo whenever I speak? It's about 300 feet from the last bend, from the last, from the last structure of the bridge to the front of Boones Ferry. It's about 300 feet. As we get off the bridge, then we maintain 4%, but then as we're about 200, for the next, for the next 100 feet, that 4% tapers down to a 2.5% slope. So we start leveling out as we get closer to the intersection of Boones Ferry.
So it's about 200 feet then, Renice, roughly, before the signal.
About 200 feet.
And are there any recommendations? Russ, you mentioned like up to 6%, up to 12% grade wise, that would still be in the realm of feasible. Is there a recommendation for when you come to a signalized intersection like that? And you're talking about this sort of heavy truck and transit traffic. Is there a recommended grade at intersection crossings like that? Or is 2.5% so much on the low side that it's not impactful? Or what would be a standard recommendation?
Yeah, you know, I don't think we have some specifics as to grade at an intersection, you know. Clearly, you make a valid point that, that the flatter it can be at an intersection for people starting and especially trucks. It, we try to provide as much, as much room there as possible. And that's why we're trying to provide somewhat of a flat area there to, to do that. But I don't think there's any specific like guidance that tells us one or the other. Just as an example, Renice, do you recall what the grade is? On 124th, as you leave Twalton. I want to say that that is closer to 5% grade. So that kind of gets you into the ballpark of what a 4% would look like. It would be something less than that.
That's correct. The last time I measured, that I think that was a 5.5 maybe, but in that realm, it's more than what we're proposing on this project.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're keeping, you know, that at the front of our thought process because we don't want to, during the design, all the other, you know, things that we're trying to remember with the impact and environment and I, the TV station I work for did a big story about the, the tire runoff affecting the salmon. So I've seen that also, but I just don't want to have anything that would possibly be a deterrent to the exact kind of truck and transport traffic that we're trying to approach and keep off of Twalton Sherwood Road. I just want to make sure that we're not you know, inadvertently doing something that's going to hinder any of that traffic from using this particular crossing.
Yep, definitely.
Uh, Council Brooks.
I just have one more. You know, when we're thinking about putting truck traffic, I just want to contextualize this. We're putting a truck traffic through a residential neighborhood. There's houses there. I, I don't, I don't know about you, but I wouldn't build a house, move to a place where truck traffic's going through my yard and above me, above my home. I, I just think, I really am just still curious, especially with the small amount of people that were in that decision-making room instead of the whole councils. This whole idea of putting truck traffic, routing it through where residents are living and not just the residents right there, but also like Victoria Woods and a lot of residents that are going to be affected with their air quality, noise, lights, breaks, traffic. I just, I'm still just kind of baffled by this whole thing. Do you have any ways to open my eyes about what I'm missing here?
But, you know, one thing just to, that we, we were asked this question about Victoria Woods and, and the, this particular road is a little over 1,500 feet away from Victoria Woods. Whereas I-5 is about 2,000 feet away from Victoria Woods. So, so it puts it into context. Yeah. People make decisions where they're going to live on, on, on all kinds of different reasons. But yeah, it's, it's, it's a good, good point.
I think one reference point would be to go back to the Basalt Creek Comprehensive Plan documents. So we're prepared jointly by Twalton and Wilsonville and think about the future plans for the area that the two cities came up with. It, it was added to the urban growth boundary primarily for employment land, which we need for our economy. So I think going back to those documents and seeing how those future plans really relied on this network being built out this way. And I think that's a good reference to start with.
But it's not going through the employment lands, it's going through people's yards.
Council Pratt.
Yeah, that would be my point too. We've got a SEPA project there and we've got all those homes going in. And it looks like this extension, at least for now, it's going to stop right across or really close to Green Hill, which is going to be an access road for this new development. So I'm wondering how recently a traffic study has been done or if one will, a traffic impact study will be done before it's built, just because I mean, we've got a mess there now. I, I just don't see how this is going to help. So I'm just wondering what traffic impact studies have been done or will be done.
And I don't know if I can answer your full question there, but we have been working with that particular development there. We have hired their same designer that's doing their design to look at the impact of this road and this intersection there. They are not proposing to take access off of Green Hill. Their access will be to Boones Ferry further to the north. I want to say it's approximately 700 feet north of this intersection. And then they also have a secondary access that they're proposing out to Norwood. So that's just, that doesn't answer your whole question, but it does sort of start to address how that access interrelates to this major intersection here.
And we have more detailed questions on that too, to staff since they're working with the developer.
Council Reyes.
You, I'm sorry, you also mentioned like that you're going to have a signal so the trucks can go through because of that grade. So isn't that just going to stop up traffic on Boones Ferry then? Because you've got a lot of traffic this, you know, south, north.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of signals on Boones Ferry.
Yeah, Council Reyes.
I too, I've been around for the last two years and I was not around when obviously this project started many, many years ago. So I don't know, I, I do have conflicted opinions about what is going on and how it happened, what were people looking at, how they were looking at the project, especially during that time. The city looked very different. Is there a, and I'm, I concur with what my colleagues have said, my fellow councilor members about the environment and the noise that's going to create in that area. My question is, is there an example of something that you built like this or you've been part of that you can, around the city or around the state that we can reference to and how they, how that go?
Trying to unmute there. Yeah, first of all, I was going to say, I've enjoyed your cats wandering around there in the background. Mine are down on the ground here underneath me, but they don't get up into the camera. But you know, I think, I think if you just look around, you know, to the county as a whole, and even, even within the city of Twalton, Boones Ferry, while it's only three lanes through the city, you have Twalton Sherwood Road that's five lanes through, through the core of your city. So you know, it, it seems like at least, you know, Aaron can probably comment on this more from a long-term standpoint, but but development and roads tend to go hand in hand. So I, I don't know if that answers your question, but I think it gives you a couple of examples of where that's at. And as far as recent roads we're building, we have recently built 124th. It's more rural, but there's a lot of commercial going up around that now or industrial. And then a portion of the Basalt Creek Parkway through there.
Yeah, I was, I was, I'm thinking more like where there's like community, not community, but homes, like like right, I feel like they're right in the middle, like the way I see it on the map and I just haven't been around too actually, but like picture this from the beginning, but it's just, it feels like it runs right in the middle. There's like, you know, I don't know, it seemed like there, there, there's a lot of biology or bio there and I feel like there's a there, I don't know, it just seems like a very odd way to put a bridge, but like I said, I, I'm trying to also give, give the whole project a benefit of the doubt to be, okay, I'm trying to picture that in my head and, and see the, maybe this will really traffic or will, you know, maybe increase, I don't know, I don't know what the outcome will be. We all, sometimes, you know, as people, we, we tend to be a little bit, we don't, we don't see beyond what we're seeing in the, in the, in the, in the picture. So I'm thinking, is there anything that that has neighborhoods like that? It did really feel like it's coming like right across a home, like a home, like right, I don't know, I'm just, I was hoping something more like that versus I know Twalton Sherwood is, but it's a main intersection, whereas this is like in, in a quiet area, there's homes, there's family. This is like a lot of not gonna stand by a diversity and I don't know. It just seemed like an odd way. That's my opinion, put a bridge right in the middle of it.
So I think one, one place to look, I think, if, if you're thinking about areas that are, that are transitioning, so areas that were brought into the urban growth boundary, they were formerly rural, they're brought into the urban growth boundary, they're planned to grow up over about 20 years. You could look at development happening in South Hillsborough today, the Cooper Mountain River Terrace area, or the county's North Bethany areas, for examples of, of what that looks like when an area's comprehensive plan has changed and new facilities are being built through them.
Thank you, Aaron.
Any other questions for county staff? Can we make it quick? Cause we're down to 10 minutes and we got other stuff to do, Kristen.
Yeah, I just wanted to, and it's not a question, it doesn't, it doesn't require any feedback back. I just to make a comment is that, you know, I, what I'm hearing the county say is that, you know, we have, this is, this has been approved, it was approved, you know, almost a decade ago. And I think that, and I'm not speaking for everybody, but sort of what I've collected is that it's, it's, we're living in a different world a decade later. And I think that there's a lot more environmental concerns a decade later. And even though something has been approved and written in, I think that we're all, some of the comments that I hear, I feel like we're saying that just because it was proved, is it the right thing to do? And we just want to make sure that it's the best option for our community today as our community is today. So I, I know a lot of work has gone into this and I appreciate everybody's. appreciate everybody's hard work and a lot of thought and time and money has already gone into this. Um, but I just feel like we need to make, this is it, this is a big project. And I want to make sure that we're doing the right thing for our community, cause it'll impact uh our community tomorrow and for future generations to put this bridge in. Um, and I want to feel good about that. Um, and I am concerned about these environmental impacts and other impacts that were brought up today. But thank you for your time.
Thanks.
I want to just piggyback to, as I want to back up what Kristen's saying. And I don't want to suffer from bad decisions from the past. I don't want our residents' health and wellbeing to be imp- impacted either. And I also know, um, to Council Reyes's questions that, you know, there's, there's widows that live there that can't sell their property. There's a lot of impact that's already happened to people. And it continues to be sort of downplayed by this um group. So I, I feel the same way. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? All right. Uh, thank you, gentlemen and Erin. For coming tonight, we appreciate you spending time with us and uh we can look forward to hearing back from you here again soon. All right. All right. So uh, we're at the point of looking at our agenda for tonight on our regular council meeting. Um, so we have a proclamation and a resolution. I'm assuming that Council Brooks will do the equity resolution, correct? And then uh the memorial day proclamation uh came from the US Conference of Mayors. And I'm happy to let someone else um read it. I'll just introduce it. Does anyone want to read it?
It just seems like you should do it though, because you're.
Given, given people options. All right. And then any questions on the consent agenda? All right. Uh, and what we'll do, since we're out of time for communications, we'll go ahead and take a break for eight minutes. We'll come back at seven o'clock with our regular council meeting. And we'll have our council roundtable at the end of the council meeting. So we'll see you around back in about seven minutes.
Thank you.